Welcome to the Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025, regular city commission meeting. It is now six o'clock. We will call the meeting to order and we'll start the meeting by reciting the present rules. Good. Would the clerk call a rule, please?
Commissioner Vedder?
Here.
Commissioner Simmons?
Here.
Mayor Lee?
I would like to motion that we excuse Mayor Lee. He is working tonight.
Thank you.
Moved in second that we excuse Mayor Lee from tonight's meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. The motion passes. Thank you.
Commissioner Homan?
Present.
Commissioner DeBrass?
Here.
Next, we will entertain a motion to approve the business agenda.
So moved.
Motion in second to approve the business agenda which includes the rules of conduct. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you. That passes. Now we're going to move into the consent agenda. And I think we have something we want to add.
Yes, I would motion that we amend the consent agenda by adding approval of the minutes for the May 29th session and the June 2nd session.
We're going to divide the consent agenda into approval of the minutes for the May 20th meeting. Plus, we're going to add May 29 and 6.
June 6. June 2nd, sorry.
June 2. Okay. Questions? Hearing now called for a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, second.
Support for the motion?
Second.
Moved in second at the minutes of May 20 plus the minutes of the executive sessions on 5/29 and June 2 be approved as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you. Now we have a couple of resolutions to honor the public service of several employees. Is William Weaver here tonight? I don't know him personally. Okay. I think, which one have you had?
I have him.
Okay, would you read that one?
Yeah, so a resolution of appreciation for the public servant of William D. Weaver as a city employee. Whereas William D. Weaver has retired as a Pickwa police officer for the city of Pickwa. And whereas his retirement follows over 21 years of faithful and dedicated service to the city and its citizens. Now therefore be it resolved by the commission of the city of Pickwa, Miami County, Ohio. All members elected thereto concurring that section one in recognition and appreciation of the public service of William D. Weaver with the city of Pickwa. This commission tenders its unanimous and respectful tribute by this resolution, which shall be a matter of public and permanent record. Section two, this resolution shall take effect and be enforced and after from the earliest period allowed by law.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
And next, we will consider a resolution for Alan Barga. Is Alan here tonight? Frank, would you like to?
Sure. It's a resolution of appreciation for the public service of Alan J. Barga as a city employee. Whereas Alan J. Barga has retired as a power distribution manager for the city of Pickwa. And whereas his retirement follows over 24 years of faithful and dedicated service to the city and its citizens. Now therefore be it resolved by the commission of the city of Pickwa, Miami County, Ohio. All members elected thereto concurring that section one in recognition and appreciation of the public service of Alan J. Barga with the city of Pickwa. This commission tenders its unanimous and respectful tribute by this resolution, which shall be a matter of public and permanent record. Section two, this resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law.
Thank you. All right. So at this point, we need to consider a motion to pass Resolution R-65-25 for the public service of William Weaver. And I think we can probably combine this with Resolution R-66, Resolution of Appreciation for the Public Service of Alan Barga. Are you okay with that?
So moved.
Okay, moved?
Second.
Moved in second that both resolutions, as presented, be approved. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you very much. Thanks for reading those kinds. Appreciate it. Now we're going to move into new business. First on our agenda is Resolution Number R-63-25.
A resolution authorizing the police department to enter into an agreement with Motorola Solutions for the purchase of new body worn cameras.
Good evening, commissioners. Tonight we come before you to request to purchase 25 new body worn cameras for the police department. The existing units that we have are no longer in service. They're no longer available to be maintained by the manufacturer. And it's become difficult to get replacement parts and they won't provide software update. Our body worn cameras sync with our in-car cameras and are activated anytime an officer has an interaction with the public. And currently with the 25 we have, we have seven of them that are out of service today, can't be repaired. And with this request, we applied for a grant to cover the entire cost, but we're only awarded, as you can see, the $42,000. The request is for to purchase body worn cameras by Motorola. Again, it's the same unit that we have the in-car camera. Any other unit wouldn't sync with the in-car. So which are activated with emergency lights or whenever the officer activates it. The manufacturer, you know, they'll sell you the whole units on a one-time payment or they'll do an installment plan. So the request tonight is to enter into an agreement with them to replace these 25. And that the installment plan, we have a grant to cover the first year and about three or four thousand of the second year. So the remaining payments of 36,000 would either need to be budgeted in future years or that we would need, what will likely goes apply for additional grants to cover it. But if they're not awarded, then we would need to budget that as an item in our budget. So that's the request before you can see the total project cost is 186,000. In this expense, it's important to note that, again, the units we have are going out of service. So the new units, in order for them to sync with the in-car cameras, there need a new sync module in the car. So we'll have to put 13 of those in the units that we have. And then likewise, it comes with the redaction software, which is AI powered. So that's part of this cost here. It's not just the body cameras to get the new ones, to get them to sync and to be able to redact the software. It's a total package, if you will. So that is requested.
Thank you. Questions from commission? I have a couple of comment cards. Kim, did you want to talk about this one?
Hello, Kim Heisler, 1802 West Parkway Drive. It's great to be able to upgrade. Absolutely positive. We want our police officers to have the best out there. The only thing I just want to mention along with all this other software that we get, and I'll probably mention it each time, we get software where there's going to be an annual fee that we have to pay over and over and over again because of the cloud base of storage. And I think, was it 36 or is it $42,000 a year if we don't get it covered by?
First year is 42,000, which is covered. It's 36 for the next four years.
Okay, so 36,000 for the next four years on top of all the other software for the accounting and stuff like that. It all adds up. I just wanted people to be aware that, you know, at some point, it gets to be a lot that we need to run the city and not just put money out so things are going to be a little bit more organized. But for sure, we definitely need, you know, the police and that accountability there. But it's a lot of money to put out there. And also in the paperwork, it said that those numbers didn't include the installation fees. So, and then underneath the writing of the numbers and the values and stuff like that, it said unless implementation is that installation fee. Because, you know, installation, when you take your car in, sometimes it's a lot more than actually getting the software itself. So I was a little bit curious about how much that installation fee is if it's not included in that.
The installation is simply plug and plug. There is no fee associated with that.
Okay, that's good to know.
We'll unplug the USB ports that are currently there, plug in the new ones.
Okay, thank you. That's good to know.
Jeff Grimes. Jeff, was this one that you wanted to comment on? Oh, it's 6725. I'm sorry. I misread it. 6725, 2825. Nick Martin, would you like to comment on this one?
Not this one.
Okay, wait one moment. This is 63. That's, I have my numbers turned on. I don't believe I have any other, any other public comment cards received at this point. So we'll now ask the question. How do you care to move with Resolution R-63-25?
I would like to make a motion that we pass R-63-25.
Very good. Support for the motion?
Second.
Moved in second that Resolution R-63-25 be approved as admitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. The resolution is approved. Next, we're going to look at Resolution Number R-67-25.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to sell 5.079 acres parcel of land at 9801 State Route 66, Pickwa, Ohio to AES Ohio.
Good evening, commissioners. This resolution and the next resolution are in tandem. So what I talked about in the first one will be adequate and will be pertinent to the second resolution following this. These resolutions are to, the one is for a sale of land to AES Ohio for substation and electrical components. And the other one is a lease of land to AMP T for the same, you know, same infrastructure. This, this project started back in, went to the energy board in August of 2022. I was, I did provide a lot of stuff in the agenda, so hopefully some of that was looked at and try to make this clear. Back in August of 2022, the, the plan to sell 3.5 miles of transmission line that the city of Pickwa owned to AMP T was, went to the energy board. And then that sale went to the commission, the people, not everyone up here, a couple of you. In October 18th of 2022, that, that resolution passed. That resolution was R-118-22. So that sale of that transmission line started our, started our cooperation with AMP T on this, on this journey here. The, the equipment that's being replaced that is out there is basically where AES's transmission lines stop and meet the AMP T transmission lines. And when I say AMP T, they are, they work with Pickwa. Pickwa will be helping maintain this equipment out there like we do our other substations. So that, that's what started all this in motion. And now two and a half years later, AMP T and then AES are ready to make these upgrades to our power system. So the first one is for the sale of land that is currently owned by the city at 9801. It is the 5.079 acres north of the current water treatment plant. We have deemed that we will not need this for any future expansions of the water plant and felt that is a good location where the lines meet and that we could facilitate this with city property. Do you guys have any questions on the sale of this land to AES Ohio?
A couple of. First of all, what is the zoning for this?
Currently it is civic or civil? Civic.
Civic, okay. What was the planning commission? What was their recommendation for this?
I believe the first time, it might have, I don't know the exact, it might have been tabled. And then I believe they wanted to change it to some other classification.
I believe it was conservation, was it not?
I, that's probably it.
Yeah.
And then when it came to you guys, it was changed to the civic.
Right. And why would they have wanted to have it be conservation?
I cannot speak for them, what the decisions were.
I think they mentioned something about there's endangered species that live out there and there's an eagle's nest and so forth. That was at least what was got brought before us. So, yeah, so we said, we're not going to do this. So instead of us doing this, we're going to sell it and let someone else do this?
But the plan all along was to, when that went to planning commission, the plan was to sell this 5.07 acres to AES Ohio to do the work. And then that we would lease out another portion of acreage on the land for the other portion of the substation.
Right. Okay.
Other questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. This, the need or the desire for this substation, my understanding that this is to build an increased redundancy and capacity for our current system. Is that correct? Yes, it is. Replacing the 50-year-old infrastructure that's physically on the poles and putting it in a substation with more protection, relays, breakers, control, automation, that it can be controlled from off-site. Okay. It's also my understanding in our conversations regarding this that as we continue to look for growth in our community, whether it be economic development, housing, further expansion of the community, that this is a vital infrastructure improvement in order to make that happen. Is that accurate? Yes, all of the feeds into the city, whether they're from AES or AMP T, they're all vital to the overall power grid with the city. It allows power to be shifted, moved as needed during peaks in one area or the other. So it's all part, it all works together. Okay. My, my, I got two more for you here. My, my next one is, it's also my understanding that the reason why, well, two reasons why this particular project is taking place on, on this particular parcel is because AES's main line runs through there. Yes, it runs adjacent to the property and then AMP T takes ownership of the line that we sold them at the same spot. Got it. Now while that line, I'm sure is probably miles along, how many other pieces of property along that line do we own or control? At that close to that junction point, the water plant is the northernmost part of Pickwa and we do control the land. Okay. And then my last question, you referenced your packet. We, the last time this was brought up, and I'm assuming tonight, that we're going to hear some folks talking about electromagnetic fields. And you included this in our packet. Yes. Would you please explain what this tells me? Electromagnetic fields, that is, they've been studied for 30, 40 years now. And that is a good summary and takes you to, I believe, five other links with the QR codes of studies by national and worldwide organizations on the safety of EMF. So that, that is just a resource that people could look on their own, which way put in the agenda packet for them to look into that. And it also specifically says, right, that the levels at the right-of-way boundary are between 30 to 60. And that's specifically for the site that we are. Yeah, basically EMF, it is, the further away you are away from the lines or the equipment, it kind of dissipates exponentially, the further away you get. But that would, that would, that would, right there, that first one there, that's if you were 10 feet away from the current transmission lines that are there now. And then they show distances further out and how it lowers the, the radiation as you go further away. Got it. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Other questions from commission? Now we'll move to some questions from public. Brittany Brown, 9937 Harden Road.
Hello, Brittany Brown at 9937 Harden and Alt. I have a whole speech prepared, but at this point, I'm struggling going to that. Based off of comments that you just said, so you're pointing out that there's a slide in there talking about EMFs. We handed you guys multiple studies that say the opposite. So what we hand in is less important than what he's giving you or no? Because what we handed in was not discussed. It was all swept under the rug. But we're making sure to point out that he has a link in there stating that it's not dangerous. But yet there's multiple studies that show that it is. So I'm a little confused on why that's any different. Outside of that, I'm back once again asking you not to sell the property to AES for a substation to be built. I'm here with the hope that you will listen and prove to us that everything we hear about the city is not correct. Do you know how many people we have spoke to about this matter or any other matter involving Pickwa? And sadly, most residents' answers are how they do not come to these meetings or speak up because it is a waste of time. We have had so many people tell us that it is a waste of time because the city manager and the commissioners do as they please. We have been told that they do not listen, that they lie, and that they do what they want and ask for forgiveness later. Is that what you all really want to be known for? Is that what we want majority of the residents to think of the city? My husband and I are new to this and came to these meetings, giving you all the benefit of the doubt and disregarding all the negative things that we have heard and look at where it got us. We alongside many others, collected over 200 signatures of residents asking you not to zone the parcel civic so that the parcel could be, not be sold to AES for a substation. We sent you multiple emails, multiple studies, letters filled with facts and our concerns for our home and our family's health. I know not only did we send them, but so did many other residents. And you blatantly disregarded every single thing that we said and continued on with your plans that, that all of the surrounding residents begged you not to do. A, at what point in time do your residents' voices and concerns actually matter to you? Not only did you not listen and take our opinions and facts coming from your residents, but during some of these meetings, your commissioners thought it was okay to cut off the residents that were speaking. And if they were not cutting them off, they were downplaying the severity of the situation and people's intelligence. The perfect example for that is on March 18th, when we were in this exact room talking about the negative effects that could be caused to our kids and animals around. Tom Homan stated, so zoning it CD tonight, would it cause bald eagles to evaporate? Every single one of us know that it was not going to cause them to evaporate by zoning the parcel civic. But we also all know that the moment you zoned it civic, you were already moving forward with your plan of selling this plot of land to AES. And though a lot of you wanted to keep going back and forth, saying that wasn't already decided on, you guys are proving today that it was. Not only the first parcel of land that we are speaking of, but now leasing a second one in the same exact area that is right across the street from my home. So I'm not going to have one, but two. So all of the time that you have spoke over us and cut us off, not letting us state our facts and our opinions because it was not going with zoning the parcel, you are proving right here it actually did. At what point in time will you stop trying to hush the residents that come here to speak and stop treating us as if we are ignorant? Don't you think it's time to start being truthful and just let us in on your plans instead of denying them and continuing to do them right in front of our space? In Jeffersonville, Ohio, Barry Lucas, senior project manager from AES Ohio states, it's better to get the substations put in before the growth comes around, right? Because nobody wants a substation in their backyard. So we're building, we've already bought the land and we're rebuilding the substations before the growth comes in. But yet you guys are doing exactly that, putting one in my backyard and my front yard. Speaking of telling the truth, can you start now by giving us an actual answer on why you want to put the substations out by our home? You, Frank, has stated some of this. I've been told multiple times that we need it to help the city of Pickwa with the power grid so it does not go down. It's wild to me that that's stated because Pickwa prides themselves that we do not lose our power when surrounding areas do. So am I right by saying that we actually need the substations due to all the development on the other side of town by Farrington Road that your residents also do not want? Correct me if I'm wrong, because like I stated, I'm new to this. But my understanding is that the commission board is here to be the voice of the people. So at what point in time are you going to stand up against your city manager and what he wants and be the voice for the people? Because I don't know about you, but I have not attended one meeting nor read one letter coming from any Pickwa resident asking you to move forward with this. And if you have that, if you've gotten that, then I would love to see proof. Also, could you tell me if we are supposed to receive a letter about this meeting and the possibility of selling this parcel of land to AES? Because I do recall at a meeting, being told that we would receive a letter, but yet we have not. All in all, I am asking you again to please save our home and safety and not sell the land to AES, nor lease the adjacent land to AMP for these substations. And to add on to the bottom, if we have the money and the manpower to do all these things, to put a substation and everything out there, I'm pretty sure we could add on lines to where there's other places in Pickwa, the substation could be put. So we're making the comment that that's the best place to put it because it's where their main power line is. If we can do all of that, then I'm pretty sure we can add in another power line. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a card from Kim Heisler.
Kim Heisler, 1802 West Parkway Drive. So when we got the solar panels, I think the city of Pickwa or citizens thought that that was going to benefit us in some way, that it was going to help our electric bills. It was going to be a great thing. I don't think any of that turned out to be correct. And again, city of Pickwa has great power. We take pride in always being up when others are down. Again, why not be transparent? It's, it's like opening a book and seeing pictures that this is very obvious, that it's going to be for the new development. Come out and say that. I mean, it's just, it's crazy. You guys stating transparency, but want nothing of it. That's it to do with it. Another thing is if we're giving so much up and you guys are selling this, we're having AES come in, we're going to be supplying other people, we're going to be building up the city, no growth for 50 years, mind you. Now we have all of this stuff all at once. I'm not against growth. Growth all at once, though, can bankrupt the city. You know, $20,000 here, $20,000 there yearly, annually on software. Somebody's phone's gone off. Hello? And it all adds up, right? And at some point, we're just, we're just not going to have enough. The funding may not be there or whatever. But how are we going to be able to sustain all of this anyways? My question is, if we're putting that out there, we're leasing land to, we're selling land and then we're leasing it to these selling land and then we're leasing it to these, these places, we've already got solar fields, can you guys write something in an ordinance where we can benefit back since we're giving up so much? I mean, can we, can you lower our rates because of this benefit that's going to be helping everyone? I know it grows the city, but it's at our expense, every bit of it is at our expense, minus the grants. As for the documents mentioned earlier, thanks for putting that in there on the EMFs, and at the same time, just like mentioned earlier, we've had water results coming from Pickwa and they say, oh, they're fantastic. Yet, another company out there not associated with Pickwa comes back and says, "These results are either toxic or they're hazardous." So there's conflicting information. I don't know who we trust, but since there's two, it seems like we should get another independent party to do that. Same with the battery burn. Boars were bored down six foot. They should have been a surface or within just a short amount of time. I mean, obviously, way down there, it's not going to see that far that fast. What we needed was stuff from the top. So to me, it just sounds like a he said, she said, but there's no one actually coming together to try to make a sound resolution. It's all or nothing. We need, we need to find out really what the truth is. You know, I'm not a lawyer, but there should be somebody out there that could be independent that actually gives us the truth and not absolutely one way or absolutely the other way, because there's a lot of gray in between with that. So, oh, and another thing. Is it possible, it was mentioned earlier today at a different place, that if AES comes in and they do have battery storage for backup, which they shouldn't have, but if that's the route they're going, because nothing is transparent, as you guys say it is, can we look into another alternative source to be able to store that? That's my questions. Right? Thanks.
Thank you. I have a comment card from Richard Price.
Richard Price, nine-nine-one-one Harden Alt. First of all, you guys list this property as Route sixty-six. It's ten feet from my house, okay, where four generations of my family have lived on Harden Alt and that road. So when you put your water treatment plant in, you tried to buy the two homes out there. At the time, my family owned both homes, and we didn't want to sell. We've been there for four generations. So they said, okay, we're going to leave this open space, the five acres in question. We're going to leave that, we're going to transplant trees, we're going to make a buffer. You know, you came over to our house with color drawings and trees surrounding the new water treatment plant, and then you put it in, and then you lit the place up like never dark. Noise, trucks deliver stuff at five-thirty in the morning, which you say doesn't happen, but I'm now starting to record it and call the water treatment plant every time they do that. Now you're going to put a substation in, literally, the property line's ten feet from my house. And you're not just going to do that on the side of me, you're putting another substation right across the street from me. And I already have issues, like, I don't want to say that radiation affects you, but after twenty years of working in the power industry, for me, I have immune system disorder that's either caused by chemicals or radiation. Now, I'm going to point to being in the power industry, which put me on disability. So in light of all this going on, the people don't want it there, the planning and zoning said, "We don't want to see it there." The representatives from Washington Township, which gave you the property for the water treatment plant that you annexed into the city of Pickwa. So there's one piece of the city of Pickwa, it's the five acres right next to my house. I live in Washington Township, okay? So I have, I pay city of Pickwa taxes, I have to fight to get the road plowed, and because Washington Township says city of Pickwa, and now you're going to put two substations on either side of my house. Like, there's no way I'm going to avoid the traffic, the noise, the hum, you can't deny that that occurs, and the lights. But one thing that came out of you guys voting on the zoning changes, the water treatment plant shut off another fifty percent of their lights. So it's actually dark there now, which is nice. But when you put a substation in, like, they'll put it, if they can put a fence on the property line, it's ten feet from my house. I already have drainage issues because it used to slope where the water treatment plant is. So I've had to waterproof my basement, I don't have to add filters on my well because the water got more sulfur, because the natural aquifer used to blow off.
It does not.
And it doesn't anymore. So the ditches stay standing water, like, right now, there's standing water in them. And you're going to put the substation right where any bit of drainage I can get from my house is going to disappear. And you've already flooded the neighborhood behind it because of the way that the water has to run down through the subdivision behind Harden Alt and that road. I just don't know how you guys can, you know, have your P and Z, people come in, we do our due diligence, and you still can't go along with your own planning and zoning, the wishes of the people, Washington Township which gave you the land. The fact that when they first put it in, they said, "There'll be no," on your original drawings of the water treatment plant, it shows area of future development, which is a small parcel up in front to the south of the water treatment plant. That's what existed on the original plans. And we were assured, living there, this will not intrude on your lifestyle. This substation, two of them? I'm serious, I won't be more than fifty to a hundred feet from two substations, one on each side of my house. I don't know how, I don't, I don't know how you can go against, you know, the health issues, the light pollution, I mean, I am, I have no alternative but to sell my house if you guys do this, and you're going to kill the value of the house. Because which one of you would buy a house with two substations, maximum a hundred feet from the house? Two, not one, two. Are any of you guys interested in a house? Would you buy a house there, Tom?
I can't afford it.
You can afford my house, this is a small house. Would you, would you entertain buying a house next to a substation?
Your time has expired. Thank you. Thank you. White place. I have a comment card from Nick Mahart.
I wish I had something more poignant to say. Obviously, there's a lot of passion in the room tonight, and I really feel for these residents behind me. And I agree with their sentiments. Obviously, something does need to be done about this. This has been an issue, an ongoing issue, for quite some time now, and this is our community, and, you know, we're, we're fighting for what we believe in. And they're right, they deserve not to have these substations, you know, next to their homes. We deserve not to have those woods chopped off, chopped up, and we deserve to have the I looked and said, surely, we can't be the only ones with this type of issue. And it turns out that there was a case study in Wisconsin. This whole thing got kind of, you spelled my name wrong. Anyway, this whole thing got caught up in a court battle, and eventually, it got hung up in the courts, and they eventually just put a stop to it. And I wish I had the paperwork on that, I printed it out, but unfortunately, I didn't know we were going to get deep into it tonight. So, yeah, I have that printed out, so I can email you that or present it to you next time, but hey, we're here tonight, so, a little bit too late for me. But those are my words, and I do agree with the two residents that came up here so far. And I believe that they speak, you know, passionately for the city and passionately for what they believe in, and I believe their voices should be heard. Thanks.
Thanks for your opinion. I have another sheet, Jeff, Jeff Grimes?
Jeff Grimes, fifteen twelve Margine Drive. Can you read my shirt? Pretty much, huh?
Is that for Pride Month?
No. No, it's not. Sorry. Sorry to bust your bubble. That's for, that's for the people that live here on Harden Road, Alt and that. Since you, since you want to always argue with me, would you want a substation, where do you live at, Nicklin Avenue? So what if you owned that house, peace and quiet, nothing's ever going to go there, now they're going to build two substations next to your house? Would you like that? It's pretty simple, yes or no? What about you, Mr. Vetter?
This is your opinion time, and we're offering you a chance to do that.
I'm just asking you guys if you would like that built by your house.
This is your opinion time. I state your opinion, you have five minutes.
What about you, Mr. DeBros? Would you like that built by your house? Yeah? What about you? Where did you live at? Aitken Ridge?
Me.
Mr. Openorfer? Would you like that built by your house?
This is your time for comment.
Okay, so, are you guys recording the meetings yet? Can the citizens see the meetings? You can't run meetings so the citizens can see it, but you're going to lease stuff to people that are going to kill us all. So the meetings aren't being recorded, only after the last tree has been cut down, only after the last river has been poisoned, only after the last fish has been caught, only then will you find that money cannot be eaten. Wow. So we got the resolution R sixty-seven dash twenty-five. Which parcel, you don't even have which parcel number down, for the five-point-oh-seven-nine acres? How much are you selling it for? We've been here several times and repeatedly, well, we're not, we don't know what we're going to do to that, oh, we're not selling it to AES. Who are you selling it to? AES. Wouldn't you, shouldn't you have the parcel number down if you're going to sell it, so we know which one you're going to sell? Which one, which parcel are you going to lease? And shouldn't there be a parcel number on the ones that you're going to lease? How much is the lease? How many years? Originally, all this started with eight parcels, but we can't find where the other six parcels are included. And if you guys do this, man, you do not listen to the concerns or cares of the citizens of Pickwa, which is kind of obvious because you won't answer my questions. Last but not least, if anything happens in this area, you're forgetting, or, I'm not sure what you're doing, our water source, anything runs down that area, goes into the canal, there's a huge culvert that runs from that canal into Swift Run. So you go in zone and sell all this stuff, and it's right next to our town's water source. You guys are absolute idiots. My time's up.
Thank you.
Thanks for making my question into the body.
All right, I have no other comment cards for R-sixty-seven dash twenty-five. Therefore, we will move to consider the resolution.
I would move that we adopt resolution R-sixty-seven dash two-five.
Second. Been moved in second that the resolution number R-sixty-seven dash twenty-five be approved. All those in figures signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
No.
No.
White place?
I'm asked for a real call vote.
Okay, well, let's go for the real call.
Commissioner Vetter?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
No.
Commissioner Homan?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBros?
Aye.
The resolution is approved. Now we're going to consider resolution number R-sixty-eight dash twenty-five?
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease of land agreement with AMP Transmission LLC for power system improvements.
Questions from?
Yes, yes, commissioners. So this is the second portion of this, this is the, for the city manager to enter into a contract to lease the land to AMP Transmission LLC. It will be approximately two-point-four acres inside the fence. I guess I've mentioned most of the stuff in the first one, if there's anything that's come to mind or that you would like clarification on for this lease, I could address that.
Questions from commissioners?
Just a brief comment. When we read these, it starts out with a resolution authorizing, okay? And that means whoever the, whoever it is we're authorizing, we're saying, "I trust you to get this done. I trust you to do it honestly. I trust you to do it thoroughly."
Other questions from commissioners? I have a couple of comment cards. This one is from Richard Price. This is in reference to R-sixty-eight.
I guess for now, we're going to lose this battle. R-sixty-eight, inside the fence. What fence? The land you're leasing. There is no fence there. We see the proposed place for the substation, it's right across the street from my house. Yet it's going to be inside a fence, like, oh, this will be a new fence. And what are you going to do? And while I'm here, you know, what I should do is actually just, hold on one second, I just, I got my time. So when I'm in my, my, my house, in my living room, wait a minute, we can just play what it sounds like at five-thirty, five-fifty-five in the morning, at my house, because I have a water treatment plant. Sitting at my table, in my house, at a place that you say doesn't have anything out before seven-thirty, and you think that I'm even going to believe you that this is not going to cause inconvenient stress on my life, like, it's going to be lit up like a, like a ball field there? What distance do you think is between these two substations? Do you know? Do you know that area? It's not a football field. It's not a football field. You know, and you guys just sit there and look in the air, it's like, I can't believe that, it's so hard for me to fathom that there's, you have thirty other acres south of the water treatment plant, on the other side of the plant, that has no homes, no people, no drainage issues, nothing, vacant space. But you're going to take the five-acre parcel, which I know we're not discussing now, which is the only piece of Pickwa that exists in Washington Township, and you're going to turn that into, you know, a toxic thing, and AES will for sure put battery storage, but then the city of Pickwa is going to go right across the street from my house and build a second substation and throw it full of lights. You don't think that this will affect my lifestyle and my neighbors' lifestyles? You don't think that we, we lived in Washington Township because we didn't want to live in the city of Pickwa next to all this stuff and all the power transmission and water treatment, and then you annex that property into the city of Pickwa, assuring us that none of this would occur, and here it all is? And you guys sit there like, "I live on the other side of town, it's fine by me." You know, what is it, what is it, why, why it's so far out of town? You're just putting your, you're putting your waste out of town.
You're just putting your, you're putting your waste out of town. It's like you have, like, the old water treatment plant. Put it there. Put it anywhere. Why, why are you putting it at the farthest extreme point? Both of these are on the Pickwa-Washington Township line. You've moved them as far out of Pickwa as you possibly can. Can't go any farther. You're in Washington Township. I don't, I don't understand. I just don't understand how you all can just sit there and go against your planning and zoning commission and entire public. I mean, can anybody tell me, I didn't know that the city commissions and cities would do that. Go against their own planning and zoning commission.
This was your public comment.
Yeah, I know. I just, I find this to be like, it's surreal that you don't answer questions. I mean, there's no question and answer time. It's just my time to speak. So no matter what we say, we can't ask you a question and hear your personal opinion because I don't know why.
You could ask me.
Paul, you're the only person up there who is against having this put in our neighborhood. Like, right in my, like, literally in my yard.
I understand.
Okay? And it's like, I don't know. You know, I've been mowing 25 feet of that property for generations. I got some, I'll bring some photo, I'll have some photos sent in of how far over into the property we've been mowing for generations. Cause I know there's other aspects that can be looked at as far as that goes. But I don't really, I'm at a loss for words. I, I don't know what to say to you guys. Other than what, when, when it's all said and done, and the lights are on and the hum is there, is that when the lawsuits start coming and the city of Pickwa starts compensating people? Why don't you, why don't you get together again like you did with the water treatment plant and buy our houses from us so then you can do, burn batteries and do whatever you want up there? On top of your own aquifer. That's what doesn't, I just don't understand the logic. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. I think Mr. Grimes has left. Kim, I have an application for Kim Heisler. Would you like to speak? You're waiving that opportunity.
Thank you.
Uh, I have one from Brittany Brown.
Brittany Brown, 9937 Harden, Alden. So Paul, I'll ask you. Since when did all the commissioners and Will Paul and, I don't know who this guy is, all become mute and not talk back and forth and answer questions at commission meetings?
Well, you'd have to ask them. They, they all meet, you know, they meet with each other and.
At the last meetings I've been to like this, they would answer questions and talk back and forth. So are we just keeping our mouths shut now because we don't wanna tell our true answer because we know it goes against what we're voting? Or... Okay, I'm gonna take that as it, yeah.
I feel like I responded a lot of the last topics came up, and I believe you referenced some of my quotes on that. I, I don't think that my opinion on this, one, hasn't changed, and I think, I don't, I don't think it's a mystery to anybody.
So you don't know how to say it respectfully then? You can't talk to us respectfully because every meeting I've been to, I've spoke to you respectfully as all of you. When you're making rude comments to us and degrading most of the people here, it's ridiculous that you're sitting in the seat that you're in then, that you can't speak out loud and do it in a respectful manner.
Do you live in Washington Township?
I sure do. And I pay city utilities, and I pay city taxes.
That's my next question. Thank you.
Mm-hmm, yeah. You wanted me to sit down and not speak since I'm in Washington Township.
I asked a question about who's appropriate to make comment. Quietly.
So, Paul, I'll ask you this also. As commissioners, you guys are the people's voice, correct?
Absolutely.
You're voted in?
That's my responsibility, ma'am.
Okay, so did you receive any emails, letters, people wanting this?
Not a single one.
Okay, so are all of you willing to answer that question? Did you receive any?
I'll be more than happy to answer that question. And so, the, um, the answer to your specific question is a much broader conversation.
Okay.
Because I have heard from thousands of residents who are sick and tired of the city being stagnant with no growth and no expansion and no economic development.
Okay.
And when I ask the utilities director as to what the purpose behind this was for and why this was needed, and it specifically is in order to provide the capacity and the infrastructure we need for that future growth and expansion.
Okay.
So, then it becomes a question on this particular issue, right? No matter which decision we choose, someone's going to be upset.
And I understand your point of view on that, but that's not necessarily the case. If you guys would look in other places where it's not residential area. Multiple times before, you have told us that there are other substations in Pickwa by residential areas. There is one home by that. One. You guys are putting it in an area where it's surrounded by residential areas. I am all for growth. I think it's great if Pickwa grows. I don't think it needs to be at the expense of your residential areas. There are so many other places out there where this could be put.
Well, and again, it comes back to the other questions that I ask, and that's control of the land, where the line is, and where the infrastructure is actually needed to have the desired impact. So again, I recognize the position that you're in, and quite frankly, had this be going in, in my house, I would be standing up there for you as well.
Then could you please show that as we're here?
What I'm, the, the position I was elected to was to make these decisions based off of the well-being or interest of the entire city.
And I understand that.
And so, the reason I voted the way I did on that one, and well, on this one, is because again, there's no, regardless of what decision is made, there, there are going to be unhappy entities.
I do believe that you have the opportunity of putting in another line to where it could be put somewhere else, where it's not affecting people directly. I will stand by that through and through. I will also ask that maybe next time, speak up a little bit about it because honestly, as you sit there and you're looking down the whole time and you're not participating, to me, it seems like you could care less about what we have to say and what we want. And you guys are here as the voice of us. I would also love to see any letters, anything that you got of people asking for this to be there. Not about the growth, but for it to be in that exact area. Because if there's no letters about that exact area, then I think you guys could be doing a better job of figuring out where it could be.
And again, I, I, sitting here, I understand the, your concerns and your issues, and I, as I have said.
Then please don't downplay them from here on out.
I have not downplayed.
When you get him softball questions about the EMF exposure and, and the form that's in there, you've not once asked us about the information we had. You didn't reach out to us about the information we had. I don't even know if you read it. But you care about what he gave you. You've not spoke to any of us. I've put in a lot of time and effort. I have a full-time job and two kids, and I'm doing my best for them and being here. And I know you have kids.
Your time is up.
And I know you would do the same. But you guys are not proving it.
Your time is up. Thank you for your comment. I have no further comment cards on this issue. Uh, so now we will consider, uh, resolution R-68-25.
I would move that we adopt resolution R-68-25.
Second. Been moved in second that resolution R-68.
Request a roll call vote, please. Second.
I think we can do that. Let's have a roll call.
Commissioner Better?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
No.
Commissioner Hulman?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBros?
Aye.
Resolution R-68, uh, dash, uh, dash 25 has been approved. Now we're gonna move on to resolution number R-69-25.
A resolution to authorize the city manager to enter into a stormwater easement agreement and have said agreement recorded.
Good evening, commissioners. Uh, this resolution, R-69-25, is a resolution to authorize the city manager to enter into a stormwater easement agreement. Uh, you will recall about a year ago, as the project where the old hotel was located, where currently Chipotle, Olive Garden, and a future hotel are being constructed. As part of that development agreement, uh, there was a stormwater pond that was constructed. This easement authorizes the developer to utilize the infrastructure necessary to access that pond for perpetuity, uh, to allow the stormwater to go where it was designed to go. There any questions that you have for me? I'd be happy to address them.
Questions from commissioners? You already done? Uh, I don't believe I have any comment cards from the public. I do not. So we'll consider the issue. Uh, this is issue resolution number R-69-25. How do you want to proceed?
I would move that we adopt resolution R-69-25.
Support for the motion?
Second.
Moved in second that resolution number R-69-25 be approved. All those, uh, you want a roll call?
Request a roll call.
Let's do a roll call.
Commissioner Better?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
No.
Commissioner Hulman?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBros?
Aye.
Resolution number R-69-25 has been approved. Next, we'll consider resolution R-70-25.
A resolution awarding a contract to CW Tree and Outdoor Service LLC for the 2025 ADA curb ramp program.
Good evening, Commissioner Ken Kaiser, Ken Kaiser Engineering Manager. Uh, the resolution before you today is to award a contract to CW Tree and Outdoor Service for the 2025 ADA curb ramp program. On May 15th, we received six bids for this project, uh, which can be seen in exhibit A. CW Tree and Outdoor Service was the lowest bidder. In general, the work will consist of the installation of 70 ADA compliant curb ramps at intersections throughout the 2025 pavement program. We will also be replacing 10 driver approaches at various alley entrances. Um, and those alleys will be paved as part of this 2025 pavement program as well. Uh, and then, and included in that as well, we will be replacing nine catch basins that are directly adjacent to the curb ramps. Um, just curb ramped, or catch basins that are in four shape, and it makes sense to replace those before the, the roads paved. And, um, they're directly adjacent to the curb ramps, so it allows for, uh, low expenditure. Um, attend, or exhibit B shows the locations of all the curb ramps, catch basins, and driver approaches that will be worked on, which encompasses the entire 2025 pavement program area. Uh, we are asking for $280,000, which includes a 15% contingency. Do you have any questions?
Questions from commissioners, please.
Yeah, could you, uh, could you explain to me more on kind of a practical level what this will do for ADA compliance? Uh, for, for instance, any individuals getting out, out in this wonderful summer air in a wheelchair or a scooter of some kind?
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, a significant portion of these curb ramps or curb ADI either do not have depressed curbs, so, you know, if they have a wheelchair, um, you know, have some, walking disability, it's extremely hard to climb over a curb, um, so it depresses it. And then, uh, a majority of them either have, um, you know, water standing issues or do not have the truncated domes, which those are for, um, people who are, you know, visually impaired. It allows them to know that they're about to enter into a, uh, a crosswalk where they are allowed to, you know, cross, but, um, you know, that it is crossing a street.
Um, from my, uh, from my understanding of ADA law, uh, it's, it's kinda continuously evolving. Um, and so from time to time, it may evolve past what was previously built. Uh, how are you, or how are these audited as they're touched? Um, they, they must be compliant with whatever the most recent standard is, regardless of when they were originally put in. What is your process for kinda auditing that these are compliant with the latest standards?
Yeah, so we, we, uh, review the whole entire pavement program area and all the curb ramps that are adjacent to the street work because that is required by, you know, federal law. Um, we, uh, my engineering tech goes out, takes a look at them, um, you know, reviews them for their ADA compliance, and, uh, you know, we, we mark the ones now that need to be replaced, you know, for that project. And as you kinda alluded to, you know, the, the regulations have changed over the years. Uh, we're getting to streets where, um, when curb ramps were first installed, there was no truncated dome, so it was just a depressed curb ramp. And, um, you know, as those ADA curb, uh, curb, ADA regulations evolve, uh, we have to, you know, meet the new ones. So, um, there are curb ramps, you know, that were hitting maybe a second time because back when, uh, they first were replaced, uh, the truncated domes weren't required. So.
Thank you. Other questions for question? Uh, I have no comment cards on this resolution, so we'll move to consideration of resolution number R-70-25.
I would move that we adopt resolution R-70-25.
Support for the motion?
Second.
Moved in second that resolution R-70-25 be approved. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign?
And I'm, and I'm an aye as well. I'm, I'm in favor.
All right, now we're gonna look at resolution number R-71-25.
A resolution awarding a contract to Walls Brothers Asphalt for the 2025 Pavement Program Mill and Overlay Project.
Thank you. Uh, this resolution is to award a contract to Walls Brothers for the mill and overlay portion of the 2025 pavement program. On May 22nd, we received three bids for this work, uh, which can be seen in exhibit A. I'd like to point out that there was an alternate bid for this project, and due to the low base bid, we are including that alternate bid, uh, which is West Water Street from North College Street to Still Avenue. So we will be adding that to the Mill and Overlay Project. This project will consist of milling that existing asphalt surface, doing any, uh, necessary roadway base repairs, and placing a new inch and three-quarter asphalt surface. Water valve and manhole adjustments will be made to, you know, ensure a smooth, quality riding surface, and we will be placing new pavement markings as well.
When do you anticipate the project starting?
Um, so, the ADA curb ramp project is scheduled to be from June, um, to mid-August, and then a lot of the street surface work will, uh, start late August, early September.
And when do you anticipate it'll be finished?
Uh, by the end of October.
So we won't have snowplows moving into elevated manhole covers and things at that point? Other questions from commissioners? And I have no, I have no comment card on, on this resolution. So now we will consider resolution number R-71-25. Your pleasure.
I would move that we adopt resolution R-71-25.
Support for the motion?
Second.
Moved in second that resolution number R-71-25 be approved. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Resolution number R-71-25 is approved. Now we will consider resolution, uh, R-72-25.
A resolution of authorization by the city commission to submit a grant application to the state-funded program Nature Works for an upgrade in playground equipment at Fountain Park.
Good evening, commission. Uh, on behalf of Amy Welker, I'm gonna present this this evening. And so, uh, as everybody knows, Fountain Park is in the heart of the city, and it's approximately 36-acre park. Uh, and on that is a, uh, playground that was installed in 2008. And the, uh, current standards, uh, of the playground do not meet ADA accessibility or inclusive play. And so this grant, uh, application, the amount of, uh, $32,302 would go towards that construction. The expenditure from the general fund would be $147,756. So that would aid in bringing that cost down to the general fund.
Questions from commissioners?
Yeah, I have, the, um, expenditure, the 147, is that including the matching funds if we are successful in obtaining this grant?
It would bring that overall number down, so we have to, we have to budget for the actual cost of, of this CIP.
And then what, what's the percent matching fund? Is this 50, 20%?
I don't think it's a matching percentage. I'm not quite familiar with how it's structured. It was basically a grant application to cover the elements that were, uh, that were eligible.
Got it. So we don't have to, in, in order to get the 32,302, we don't have to match a certain percentage?
We're overspending on, yeah.
Got it. All right. Thank you. That's all.
Did we already submit an application for this?
So the application, uh, deadline was June, on June 2nd, and so this is just authorization for us to proceed with the grant.
Okay, but did, did we already apply for it?
It was, had to be postmarked by yesterday.
Right. But we haven't, so we haven't done anything with it yet?
No, so the grant had to be postmarked by yesterday, and this is simply allowing us to enter into the agreement to, uh, go after the grant. And this is simply allowing us to enter into the agreement to go after the grant.
I was just wondering if we'd actually, if an application had been postmarked and sent to them yet?
Yes, it was due yesterday.
Okay.
Other questions from commissioners? I have no comment cards on this resolution. So we will consider resolution number R dash seventy-two dash twenty-five. What is your pleasure?
Move to adopt resolution R dash seven two dash two-five.
Support for the motion?
Second.
Move in second that resolution number R dash seventy-two dash twenty-five be approved. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
And I'm an aye as well.
Thank you. The last resolution for the evening is resolution number R dash seventy-three dash twenty-five. Go ahead.
A resolution fixing the time and place for a public hearing on the proposed city tax budget for Miami County for the calendar year 2026 and draft appropriation ordinance.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. This resolution sets the public hearing for our tax budget for June seventeenth, our next regular commission meeting. And at that time, we'll bring the tax budget for, for the commission's consideration. The tax budget we pass each year at this time. And that allows the county tax commission to approve our tax rates, property tax rates, which will become after everybody turns in their tax budgets, which is due by July fifteenth.
Do I understand this process needs to be completed by June thirtieth?
We need to pass it in, by July fifteenth. That has to be submitted back to the county commissioner. Our resolution has to be passed by then and turned in. So based on the timing of our commission meetings, it looks like the June seventeenth would be the latest that we could pass this and still get it in on time.
Other questions from commissioners? I have no comment cards on this agenda. So now we'll consider resolution number R dash seventy-three dash twenty-five. What is your pleasure?
Move that we adopt a resolution R seventy-three dash twenty-five.
Support for the motion?
Second.
Moved in second that resolution number R dash seventy-three dash twenty-five be approved. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
And I'm an aye.
We have now completed the resolutions for the evening. We will quickly move into commissioners' comments. Mr. Simmons, would you like to start?
Sure, I will. I know it's pretty harsh going in with this and big loud no on all three of those resolutions. And it all goes back to if you're authorizing someone to do something, you have to have faith and trust that they're going to do that thing, they're going to do it completely, and they're going to do it well. I hate to say it, I just don't have that trust anymore. A video was brought to my attention about a week ago that is out there on YouTube. It is out on the, say, Pickla channel. And it shows employees of the city of Pickla doing things to batteries, like with guns. And I, the person who brought this to my attention, I told him, I said, you know, there are some questions that I have. Number one, is it possible that this could have been done with AI? And I was sent a report from ESRG that had the outlay of what happened in that video. And then later on, I got another email that had an attached email coming from you, Mr. City Manager, denying a FOIA request for this material. Now, in the denial, stated that it was overly broad. And he states in case law or cases of previous where it was okay to be able to do this. But with a video that has that much, please forgive the use of the word, damning information on it, what does it look like when you deny a FOIA request for that for any reason? I'd really be, I would, I would love to hear the answer from your lips because I'd like to do that here. So let's think and hear it too. Because if we wait until the meeting after the meeting, they're not going to hear what you have to say.
This is your time for comments, sir. Thank you.
That was my comment. I had a question for you. I've asked you questions before and you've answered them. I guess that tells us everything we need to know.
Do you have other comments you'd like to make?
Not a single one.
Mr. Holman?
Thank you. I have several events that are coming up that I was asked from some of the sponsors that are putting on these events to inform and bring to the public. So first up, we have on June fourteenth, Cars and Coffee. All cars are welcome, especially if they are cool. That is nine AM to noon, and it is free admission. And I believe, it doesn't say on the flyer where it's at, but does it say that? Oh, I'm sorry, it does say that on the flyer. Twelve forty-five East Ash Street, Pickla. So Saturday, June fourteenth, nine AM to noon. If you want some free coffee, free donuts, and want to look at some cool cars, that is where you can do that. There's also some family activities with a petting zoo and face painting for the kids. We have on June twenty-first, put on by Veterans Caregiver Support, a Heart for Veterans Gala. That is on six twenty-one, twenty twenty-five at the Rumors, Rumors Event Center on two oh one Robert McDavis, or Robert M. Davis Parkway in Pickla, Ohio. Guests are fifty dollars and sponsorships start at five hundred dollars. There's also a silent auction opportunity available. There's going to be hors d'oeuvres, celebration of the first five years, a magic show, and music and dancing. And of course, the opportunity to support all of our wonderful veterans in Pickla and the surrounding areas. Then we also have Pickla Fest coming up on July fourth. There is the, I believe now annual pinup contest that is also being put on by Veterans Caregiver Support. If you would like to, contestants can complete interviews, costumes, do crowd work. And the winners are crowned by the 2024 QOTCS Rochelle Castle. Let's see here. That is at nine eighty-seven East Ash Street at five PM on July fourth. Also at Pickla Fest is the annual car show. It is on Friday, July fourth, from three to eight PM. I went to that last year. There's a lot of really cool cars out there. Registration starts at, well, registration from three to five PM and awards are at seven thirty PM. Ten dollars per vehicle if you think you got a cool car that you want to show off. And there's goodie bags for the first fifty cars. That is at the Pickla Center where the mall is. And that is, like I said, very, it was a lot of fun last year, a lot of cool cars out there. Thank you again to Veterans Caregiver Support for helping put on all of these wonderful events. That's all I have.
Very good. Commissioner DeBros?
I don't have much this evening other than just a, kind of a, a public service announcement as we are finally getting summer type weather here. Kids are, are out of school now and roaming the neighborhoods, you know, throughout the day, afternoon, and evenings to keep that out for them. Also, this is, has been perfect motorcycle riding weather as I know the mayor would attest to when he'd be here. So just be safe out there as with all the various events that are planned throughout the city and downtown. And we're getting back into the swing of nice weather. Just go a little slower, pay a little more attention to our surroundings.
That was it? Very good. Thank you. I only have one comment tonight. At the last energy board meeting, I asked the question about where we were with the LED replacement for streetlights. And my understanding is that we are very close to completing the project. So if you ask the question, what's the benefit? The benefit is that we use less electricity to do streetlights and we get more light. And so the department has been working on that project for some time. I understand we have a few places where there are some additional lights to be changed out. We're making great progress on that. So it's a cost savings and hopefully a safety improvement to that. So I was very pleased to get that report. So that's a good thing. Hearing no other comments from the commission, I would ask for a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Moved in second and all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Do we need a short break before we go to? Okay, we're going to move right into non-agenda public comment. I have a sheet from Mr. Wilson. Good evening.
Good evening. Joe Wilson, two eleven West Green. Want to talk about the Neighbors Helping Neighbor Program. We're going to be starting up. It's been much raining more than every other day. Our first project is supposed to be this Friday, but I think rain is predicted, so we may have to delay that. And then that particular day was going to be mainly staffed by junior high and high school honor society kids. We had them last year. They were really good. Once we had their phones, it was great. But they did a really good job, so we're getting them back probably sometime after this week. We're also, we're happy to be getting assistance from the city thanks of the input of Commissioner DeBros. During the winter, we talked about possibly combining our forces a little bit. So at the end of June, we're going to be having the city employees do a house on Green Street. We're trying to get him, the owner, to do a little work prior to whilst getting there. So I hope it'll be a good project. The neighbors are happy because it's kind of a nice sore where it is. So they're happy to see some progress on that house. And then we'll be doing probably two other homes, two or three other homes as well throughout the year. So if anyone wants to help us paint or do yard work, we're always in native bat. Always a strong widdy enough bodies to do the work. So if you have an interest or if you have a group willing to help, give me a call at seven seven eight oh three nine oh or call the mayor. They can find me if you don't remember my number. Also, on another city-related note, I, I do a, I adopted a corner, a city-owned corner at Green and Wayne for ten or more years. I don't really recall. So I, I plant weed, trim, and water and everything in front of, it's in front of the old library. This year, when I went out, two bushes that I planted maybe ten or more years ago, at least one of them died. And the other one got a little big, so I called down to Brian Burkhart. And he, I asked him if he could maybe pull those out because I put a shovel in trying to dig them out. Didn't quite work. So he was more than happy to come out and they pulled the bushes out. And I said, while you're there, be nice if you mulched it. So he said, okay, we'll mulch it because they mulch all the other city properties as well. So they came out and mulched it. They did a really nice job. The guys doing the work were really friendly. I tried to buy them donuts. They said it's not allowed to take a donut. Not a bribe, just a donut. But they would not take it. But they were very nice and did a really good job. It looks, looks really nice because the mulch really kicks in. And I think it makes it a nice thing for the city property. Because prior to, when I did it, it was kind of a dead zone. Nothing would grow there and everything. So I want to thank Brian and all his guys to help, that helped us do that, make the city look a little better. One other quick comment on the ADA ramps. I know that there are several of them downtown that when we put them in in a range, we get a big lake there. In front of the post office is one of them. It's a really bad lake. It's hard to get a wheelchair through it after a big rain. And on Main Street, there are several areas as well. So what happens is the ramp goes in and then it's below the height of the street going to the drain. You have a drain right over here, but the water can't get to it because the ADA ramp collects the water. And then if you're in a wheelchair, it makes it very difficult. So I've been trying to get a method to, they can dig a trench or something to let the water get over there so our ADA ramps don't get in the way of a wheelchair. So maybe you could help push them along on that, just shovel them that way. And if we put in a new one, I hope they would go back after a rain and see if the new ones are doing that because you may not realize it until, until the rain hits. So anyway, thanks for all the help.
Good. Thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
I have a comment sheet from Kim Heiser.
Kim Heiser, eighteen oh two West Parkway Drive. It's just so disappointing showing up time after time. I know things are being, getting done. But when you point blank ask the city manager reasoning behind it and he points the finger right back, I would think as commissioners that I would be disappointed or be looking into that. I also saw the video. There's no words to explain what it is from an outsider looking in, what happened, why, why that took place. But zero transparency. You guys claim transparency, oh yeah, we're going to be more transparent. You shut us off for getting information. We can't, citizens can't see the meeting. You cut us off from being heard through video or audio at home and public comments. Sure, we can come in. And we're saying our piece. I just don't know how you guys sometimes can look in the mirror at night and actually sleep knowing that, once again, resolutions are passed. They're piecemealed together and passed, so your mission's accomplished, done deal. Write your hands, wake up the next day, another day. These people that live out by that power plant, who are no longer here because they're disgusted they left, don't have that, don't have that ability to walk away from it. They're looking at a situation now that changes their lives for the rest of their life. And I understand it has to be in that, that specific place. But maybe a couple acres over would have been a lot better. And yet it still has to be specifically right, right next to them. I mean, is there any compensation? Probably not. So you know, what's, what's done is done. You guys are moving forward, economic development, that's great. We haven't grown in fifty years. That's, that's great. But not to those folks. And not to those folks that understand and feel their pain because we're living in a city, maybe not right where they're at, where it's immediate. I'm looking at it as seeing all these bills and money being spent with this same core amount of citizens having to foot the bill for all the infrastructure to even get to that point. And now we have the property taxes coming up. You know, we pretty much know what's going to happen with that, but the property value shouldn't go up because nothing's happened. It's, it's, it's pretty, it's crazy to me. And you know, I'm very frustrated. And actually, it was something I didn't realize that the videos weren't being recorded anymore. That's par, I guess. I should have known that, that was going to happen and come to that. And also, it was just mentioned taking care of the flowers and trees and stuff by the old library. That's great. But I was also wondering if anybody has seen or been by there lately to see the broken windows right next to the sidewalk, which should be code violations.
Library building?
The flesh public area.
Yeah, library, gold library.
Yeah, has that been fixed? Yeah.
Well, it's owned by, it's owned by Pick, I think. We can ask a question?
City of Pickla. Yeah, I mean, I would think that, you know, if the city of Pickla has anything to do and Pick has like almost everybody that's in the city concerned about what's happening.
Code enforcement's typically pretty reactive, so if you have noticed something about broken windows or a code violation, you should report it. That would help them go out in there and find it.
Yes, but I'm, okay, Frank, you're my ward and commissioner.
Yep.
Can you please address that?
Yeah, and I-
I appreciate that.
I believe, if I remember correctly from last-
I believe, if I remember correctly from last PIC meeting, that either we were in the process or have completed the process of selling that or transferring ownership from PIC to a private entity, but I-
It doesn't matter if it's private or not, right? It's still government fix.
It, it doesn't on getting it fixed, but it's who fixes it as to why that matters. But anyway, yes, I, I up note and will ask the question.
Thank you very much. Next, I have a public comment card from Miss Lane.
Felicia Lane, 9300 State Route 66. Thank you so much. It's been a lovely day, lovely weather. I also would love to see the old library not have a giant hole in the roof, so I hope whoever purchased that will get right on it. Be great, because it's a pretty bad eyesore. So I guess I'm up here tonight, again, just disappointed, again, in the city manager, again. I think Commissioner Simmons did a great job with his comment. A lot of people that share the same sentiments in town, so I appreciate that he's giving constituents and the public a voice, that's great. So thank you. I feel like it's atrocious that you still have this guy here. Feel like you need to get rid of him. But I would like to address the video that is online. There's a video of Pickwa Police Officer shooting batteries. And I'm just concerned about it, because I feel that it was inappropriate. I have not seen a permit for such activity. It was not on the property that they had the wrong permit for when they were burning batteries for years and years and years without a permit and no oversight. I was just kind of hoping that maybe the city has spoken with the EPA or done something. I'm unsure why illegal activities can be done by police officers in this town. And there's no investigation, there's no question. It was not in an environment that I feel was secure and safe. I don't feel that it was controlled, because when you watch the video, we have officers running backwards, because there is shrapnel and projectiles coming from the battery at them. So they're moving out of the way. That seems dangerous. Route 66 is right there, we got the bike path, the dog park, not to mention the precious lives of our first responders and our officers. We love our police officers, we love our fire department. So if they were duped into doing some sort of harmful exercise, I feel like that should be addressed. What had happened if one of those officers had gotten hurt? I would like to believe that they really thought it was for the greater good and didn't feel like they were doing something illegal. I really have had conversations with law enforcement in this community, and it seems as though... I'm hoping and giving the benefit of the doubt that it was just a miscommunication, but why did it happen? Our officers could have really got hurt, really got hurt. What would this city have done if one of those projectiles had hit one of our officers out there? I mean, our town, we don't want to be embarrassed of this town. We love this town. It's why we haven't sold our properties and left and gone somewhere else, because this is what we see as home, you know, with the battery situation. We have this committee, you know, it, it was brought to my attention. Commissioner Simmons, maybe you could look into this, because I don't have a word. I'd like you to be my warden, okay? So maybe you could look into that. I'm just wondering, just a lot of things. Like they sent an email last Thursday, I believe, and asked to be put on the agenda this evening. They came tonight, I watched them walk out when I pulled up. I was told that they did not get to speak, they were not on the agenda. They asked to be on the agenda, yet you denied that. It's kind of weird. We've got plenty of time. They could, they could come during public comment. I mean, it's in the resolution that there's an update, that they present, just, it's, it's upsetting. I do want to share with the community, because that's why I continue to come and make public comment, because we do have people streaming. We have, what is it, RF?
RF Media Group.
Okay, RF. RF Media Group is here, in the back, shooting live. And I, you know, that's why we continue to come, even though all of these people out of disrespect for the community leave, because they don't care, including the city manager. But these guys are here and they're recording because people have reached out, even to them, saying, hey, this is important for us, we want to hear. The most important part for a lot of people of these meetings is the public comment. So thank you so much for recording this, Mr. Rett. Just a lot of concerns, but because I know he's streaming, I want to tell something to the community. I would like them to know that I met with State Representative Jonathan Newman. Jonathan cares about the battery situation. Maybe none of you do. But I just want to say thank you to Mr. Newman. And if there are people that are ill in town or have an illness that maybe got worse or some symptoms that they just aren't sure of, they didn't have before, you know, some kind of illness between 2018 and now. You know, if you feel that that was caused by drinking water that was not tested at the time, you cannot tell me that you tested for all of these chemicals every hour on the hour and then gave the water to the town, can't tell me that. And the plumes, the plumes, the plumes, like everywhere. Okay, thank you so much, God bless Pickwa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a comment card from Ruth Cooten.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ruth Cooten, I live on Park Avenue. I think when you step up to this podium, you're trying to make a difference. And we all saw that tonight with a lot of people's comments. However, I think we all have to do it in a respectful manner. So tonight, I have a couple of things I want to ask or just tell you about. First of all, I'm sorry that our mayor's not here, because I wanted to congratulate him on his son, Kayden, being selected as valedictorian of Lehman Catholic High School. And while the, our wonderful chief of police is here, in May of 2020, of 2021, I brought to the commission a, what can you pass around? From 23 homeowners on Park Avenue, about truck traffic on Park Avenue. It is continued, it is getting worse. Our street is being, is deteriorating because of these heavy, heavy trucks. Not only to say that in the mornings, and I do see there is a semi-truck parked along with the other waiting traffic for the school bus to load children either on or off, that is not appropriate on one of our city streets. So I know the comment was made that the police have tried to monitor the truck traffic. That isn't working. We would like to have a solution, and a solution as soon as possible. Possibly with a sign that says, "No through truck traffic." Trucks must stay on the state route. The trucks are using Park Avenue as a shortcut to get on I-75. So if you could look into that, I would appreciate it. The second thing is the slopes on Route 36. A few years ago, our friends at the Pickwa Parks raised money to help the city maintain those slopes. We planted over a hundred plant, I, no, I think it was a thousand planting. They look terrible. We turned the maintenance over to the city a number of years ago. I know they're trying to make them more presentable with the grass and so on, that's not working. We have asked for all of those plantings to be maintained, and I'm here to ask if you will help me get that done. The third thing is, and this is, seems, well, it's not minor to me. It's the yellow submarine that's been painted on the side of one of our historic buildings. As you probably know, Lauren Swisher and I worked hard on two murals in downtown. One of the Pickwa history and one, of course, is the Mills Brothers. This yellow submarine is a logo for a business. It's setting a precedence, it never should have been painted on that building. Heaven forbid that the business would leave, then we would have this yellow submarine painted on this building.
Is that painted? I thought that might have been a sign I drove past it, maybe?
It's painted.
Okay.
Has no business being on that. In fact, Lauren and I had even talked about it sometime, doing something on that building that would coincide with Don Gentile, because his statue is right there. How appropriate would that be on that beautiful building? Anyway, I'm not gonna hold you up anymore. I know it's been a rough meeting for everyone. Thank you for all you do, but please, see if you could help me with some of my issues.
I, I do want to work with you on the slopes issue. I know I came out last year when we evaluated that. And I know there was some, some of the reasoning for how the city goes about handling that or not handling that was due to virgin grass and trying to let it grow so it could establish itself, et cetera. And I, I continue to drive past that. And I continue to think that the, the grassland there that is not being mowed, because of the aggressiveness of the slope and it requires getting out the big tractor and the arm and the mowing and all that sort of stuff. I, I still feel like it's at a volume of grass that could just be done by hand with a weed whacker. I, you know, mental math, I'm seeing it take an hour to get that tractor out of the garage and out over there, an hour to do it, another hour to go put it away, not to mention the, the danger of having all that large equipment. And I, I can't help but think that, well, it might take a, a good three hours and no one wants to weed whack for three hours, that you could by hand walk that slope with a weed whacker to get some of that grass taken care of?
It's not none of the grass, it's our plantings. They're over, they're overgrown and there are dead ones and there's a dead tree. It's been there for two years. And Jen is on this committee with me. We have asked and asked for help. Somebody has got to do something. It's going to be so beautiful out there with our new buildings and restaurants, but that looks horrible. It's a gateway to our community, for heaven's sakes. We have got to, got to get this taken care of. So I expect you to join me with all three of my issues, please, please.
By the way, the, the yellow submarine sign was reviewed by the Historic Recognition Committee, and they approved that, that sign.
I'm attending that meeting at the end of the month, because I cannot believe, when I found out he was on that committee, that they approved it. They are strictly wonderful people who believe in the history of Pickwa. I can't believe they let, allow that stupid submarine to be painted on that beautiful building.
Yeah.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome, good. I have no other further comment cards tonight. Seeing that, I wanted to have motion for adjournment.
I submitted two.
I'm sorry, I have, every, every comment card I have, I've gone through.
By the way, the rules allow for a, after the comment cards have been exhausted, ad hoc members as long as it's prior to 9:00 PM. You can come up, Nick.
I, I had, I had your card for, for the comments section.
Yeah, I did fill out two comment cards, they should be up there.
Yeah, I have, I have yours with 28, 25.
Yeah, I, I had marked down to speak on two resolutions.
I apologize for the administrative error, I don't want you to waste your time on that.
And number three, yeah. So I missed out on that. The topic was community relations in the open forum topic that I want to discuss. The lack of integrity that was on display tonight from Mr. Overnurfer to Mr. Simmons, I just didn't realize that there was a, a chicken coop put in, in commission chambers. You know, it's beyond me that somebody would talk back at a commissioner like that, especially a city manager. You know, uh... The city manager had multiple opportunities to get out in front of the battery burn tragedy and issue an apology for what occurred under the authority of his signature on renewal of the contracts between himself and the entities that operated at the old water treatment plant, yet he did not. Had he issued a formal apology through multiple media formats? Had he just gotten out in front of this tragedy and issued formal apologies, statements and letters to the citizens of ours and neighboring communities? I do not believe the community would be in a fractured state of instability and distrust. Instead, we watched a man present his worst traits, those which make up the true undercurrent of his soul being and thought processes while in chambers. Reaving in guilt and deflecting responsibility, he projected his unprofessional behavior towards the citizens of the community. He challenged their rights to speak at the podium, he berated others. He challenged citizens on if they paid taxes, which is what Mr. Vedder's tried to do tonight, and lashed out, grasping in a logical attempt to belittle or justify this tragedy, emphatically saying, you guys had a coal plant for 15 years, yet you did not say anything about that. His worst but true and honest-to-himself personality traits were on full display for all to see as he remained unapologetic, deflective, self-centered, arrogant, conceited, self-serving, egocentric, and too prideful to simply accept responsibility for his contractual signature, continuing to divert responsibility onto others and unable to accept responsibility for his actions so as not to bruise his overly inflated ego. Given these behaviors and inherent traits in an apology issued now, even though it should be done as a good faith gesture and would aid in healing a community scarred, would be considered by no of those who know the inner voice of this man's psyche projected outwards to be disingenuous too little too late and full of crocodile tears. Nonetheless, arrogance and pride still need to be swallowed in an apology pursued. I believe that our commission and government has been compromised. I say this because it is on display before my eyes when I attend these meetings. I watch the commissioners who put their hearts and dedication into the community lose direction. I watched a two-term mayor, former police officer, and one of our best, simply someone deeply rooted in the community and one who wears this heart on his sleeve and speaks from his heart of true intentions and justice, freedom, and with conviction, tell his community that he appreciates people's passion and values their voice. Furthermore, he states that the commissioners would not have a voice if the citizens did not have a voice. Mayor has expressed that one thing he wanted most when he started on the commission board was for people to speak out. And he wants the citizens at the commission asking questions, because they are bringing about awareness. He goes on to say, a lot of people have positive things to say and some have negative things to say, but as long as you have a say, that's what makes America, America, and he appreciates the citizens. I believe that what is expressed above are his true sentiments. Unfortunately, in times past, these sentiments were not on display and have winged over time. On occasion, as the consent flat during the past meeting, when he told a citizen that we don't have to have public comment, which is what some of you have said in the past, too. You specifically said that to me, Mr. Vedder's. So, you know, I've pointed out a lot of this, too, before, but, I mean, just the, the nature of all this of all this should not be going on in this town right now. This should be over and done with. And this is an apology that's well overdue. And these, this is due to his contractual signature that renewed these contracts between these entities. And he needs to get out in front of this and, and put a Band-Aid on this scar because if not, it's just going to continue. Okay? He needs to contact the media and put out, and put out a formal, formal apology to every newspaper, every media outlet. I don't care if it's getting on the news because just doing it here in commission chambers is just talking to a few people in Pickwa and that's not going to cut it. He needs to send out letters to every home in Pickwa. I don't know what he's got to do, but he's got to put time and effort into this and we got to get it back on track. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I skip anyone else who wants to make a comment tonight?
Seeing none, I would motion that we adjourn.
Very good. Support for the motion.
Thank you.
Move and second that the non-agenda public comment section of the meeting be adjourned. All those in favor who signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.